Tuesday, May 7, 2019 to order. And for the record, we have a vacancy obviously in the commission now, so we'll talk about that a little later today. But we do have a forum present, so with the only absence being the position formerly held by Don Van. So if you join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to all our visitors. The first item on our agenda is the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda or any comments relative to changing to the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lloyd. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, tab A, we have approval of amendments for April 16, 2019. Commissioners have had a chance to look at those and if so, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 16, 2019.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wendling. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the acceptance of the bills, the approval of the county vouchers warrants, approval of the monthly reports, approval of the bonds, approval of the rebates. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review those? And if so, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I would move that we approve the vouchers and warrants, the monthly reports, the bonds, the rebates and has presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wendling. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a public hearing planning and zoning Mountain States Pressure Services, Inc., conditional use to store 17,000 gallons of combustible liquid. Mr. Van.
Mr. Chairman, hold on here half. We're going to go through this quick, so.
Like boom.
Okay. So, the first hearing is, the property owner is Josh Sorensen. The applicant is Gary Guard. It's a 6.45 acre parcel in Foothill subdivision, lots eight to nine they own. So it's basically 28 acres deep road. And let's just go through the slide just to show you the location of the site. Just so you know that anytime we have above 10,000 gallons of combustible or flammable material, we require a conditional use permit. This is Highway 191 South, so the jail is located to the south of this subdivision, just to show you kind of generally where it's at. This is where the storage of fuel is going. It's going in a heavy industrial zone district, which is where we like to see these type of uses. And you do see things such as storage of explosives, radioactive material, storage of above ground storage of fuel. Uses similar to that in the I-2 district. In the front of the subdivision is light industrial as you get closer to the highway for scenic reasons, but this is in the very back here. The most important thing with storage above ground is that they have proper containment, which they do. They have above and beyond what's required by the 2018 International Fire Code, so it does exceed those requirements. As far as this was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission, this just kind of shows you what's around there, all industrial type of uses you can see. This is the site plan and then the hosting of the property. We ran through all the requirements. It does meet all the requirements of the zoning resolution and the fire code. Staff recommends approval and so does the Planning and Zoning Commission. Voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend approval of the request. And the only thing is that they will require 2018 IFC file inspection if this is approved. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions before we open the bell? No. Very welcome, apparently. We'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of our hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 19-05-70-01 for approval of a conditional use permit for the storage of 17,000 gallons of combustible liquid and authorized chairman's side.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wendling. Do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Eric. Continue, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the next one is property owned by John and Trudy Doak of the Volco Trust. It's a 39.841 acre parcel. Location is right there at the intersection of Reliance Road and Highway 191, known as 46 Reliance Road. Infrastructure, septic system, will be a private water system. Fire District One, it's the territory Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy Natural Gas. It's off of Reliance Road and Highway 191. This is a final plat approval. Mr. Doak applied for an industrial subdivision off 191. Let's just get to the platinum locations. So here, down here is the intersection of Highway 191 and then the road that takes you into Reliance, right here. And then we have Wynton Road also. And we also have a railroad right away that goes through the property. So Mr. Doak's property, he owns all of this, but this is where it's developed right now, where you have his contractor shop and then you have the asphalt plant that's located to the south here. What this is doing is dividing this into three separate lots, so you can develop this lot three in the future. No plans for lot two right now. And then this will also consist of an MOU that was signed between Mr. Doak and the county for the realignment of Wynton Road, so that as you know, the way the road intersection is right now, it's not very safe, so this will bring it more into a 90-degree type of angle intersection, which is what we'd like to see. This will require City of Rock Springs approval as Wynton one mile. And we did receive comments. Staff supports the request. And it was voted four to zero to recommend approval. One board member abstaining because he works for JFC, we did some division plan. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions before we open up? Mr. Doak, is in the audience.
Yes, he can answer the questions if you want him to.
Mr. Doak, will you come up?
If you would like to come on and make better views of us. I'll sit on the court so you don't have to laugh. You guys just want to have a view of me. Thanks, John.
Well, my name is John Doak. Casey, just call me Casey, for those of you that never met me.
Any questions of Mr. Doak? Anything you'd like to say to us?
No, not really. I wish I was all done with this. But yeah, I've been working closely with Gene Legursky on this project so we can dedicate the Reliance Road to the county, because right now, the Reliance Road is mine property. It does not belong to the county. And then readjusting the Wynton Road in there makes it safer for, not only for us using that access all the time, but for the general public. Other than that, no, I'm fine.
We'll open this up for public comment then. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing and what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wendling.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 19-05-70-02. John Doak, final plat, Doak subdivision.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wendling. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What's your pleasure? Appreciate it. Thank you. I see it. Thank you. That's well done, Eric. Thank you. Next, we have public hearing for budget amendments. Bonnie Berry.
He's got some serious work in Bonnie. He could work in Bonnie, look at this.
This time of year, we get a lot of questions. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We have seven budget amendments this morning. The first is Resolution 19-05-CL-01. This budget amendment is due to the voluntary separation plan that was approved a few months ago for the commission. In order to pay for the payouts as well as some of the accruals, we had to do some budget amendments in some of the departments. It increases the expenditures in the general fund in the county assessment payroll by $41,000. It also increases the expenditures in the general fund in the facilities maintenance payroll by $63,000. And it increases the expenditures in the general fund in the county treasurer payroll by $34,000. These amounts are going to come out of the cash reserve, so it decreases general county reserves cash carryover on $108,000. Are there any questions on this? Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith.
I haven't heard where our cash carriers now, we've done some budget amendments long way and get somewhere.
Well, it depends on, are you just speaking of this last year or in total? It's pretty high. We've got several million dollars in there.
Several, like five or thirty?
Like more than 10.
Thank you.
We open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments relative to this resolution, a Sweetwater County budget amendment? Are there any comments? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure relative to Resolution 19-05-CL-01?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I would move to accept Resolution 19-05-CL-01. Allow me to sign.
Well, it takes all this to sign. I will sign. Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Continue, please, Bonnie.
Okay, next one. Resolution 19-05-CL-02. This is also a budget amendment. It increases the general fund veteran services payroll by $6,000 and it decreases the general fund veteran services operating by $6,000. So essentially, they're moving $6,000 from operating into payroll. Are there any questions on this one?
Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move that we approve Resolution 19-05-CL-02 for a $6,000 transfer of the veteran service department.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wendling. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Bonnie.
Next one is Resolution 19-05-CL-03. It's also a budget amendment to increase the expenditures in the general fund in the county commissioner payroll by $1,500 and to decrease the expenditures in the general fund county commissioners operating by $1,500. So essentially, moving $1,500 of operating to payroll in the county commissioners. Are there any questions on this one?
Commissioners, questions?
Why did this happen?
It was due to some, I know it's due to the health insurance. I'm not sure if the new commissioners on board selected different healthcare coverage than the previous commissioners, but I know it's due to the health insurance coverage.
So it's our fault?
It's all your fault.
Not sure. See, it was a rookie passing the buck here. I always caution more when you bring rookies on. Tell you what, we're worth it though. Never question a rookie.
Mr. Chairman. We got to open this up. That's right. Any other questions?
Excited today, I thought. We're in a hurry to give what Bonnie's general motion.
We'll open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 19-05-CL-03, which adjusts the county commissioner budget by $1,500.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wendling. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Bonnie, please.
Hey, next one. Resolution 19-05-CL-04. This is also a budget amendment. It increases the general fund county treasure capital expenditures by $24,000. It decreases the general fund county treasure operating by $7,000. And it also decreases the general county reserves cash carryover by $17,000. So essentially, moving $7,000 into capital for the treasure and then the remaining balance that the treasure does not have in their budget taking from cash carryover.
Yeah, I have a question. Does this, the money is required for additional computers and separate systems?
I believe Rob here is a jurist.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what it is, it's for printers. It's nine printers and nine computers is what it is for.
And how old are your printers?
The printers are 11 years old and the towers are about seven. This all started, the IT department in February went through and did an analysis of the equipment in our office, gave me a suggestion that in the next budget, we budget for this, these items. Subsequent to that, we had three of the printers have issues. And so when Tim was up talking to me about this, you know, I questioned him, said, you know, if we're going to continue having these issues, we have to replace parts in the printers. If we're going to do this in the next budget, don't you think we'd be wise to do this now rather than doing it later? He said yes, he thought it was. So I had talked to each of you at that point in time with respect to that. So they felt like it was something that has to be done in the next year regarding.
So we can anticipate that your budget request would go down by $24,000?
Well, it would have. I hadn't made a request for that. I knew this was happening subsequent to doing my budget, so. Otherwise, it would have been $24,000.
Is it called fiscal responsibility? Any other questions? We'll open this up for public comment. We'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I think that we accept Resolution 19-05-CL-04 for the treasurer's office totaling $24,000.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wendling, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Bonnie.
Next, Resolution 19-05-CL-05. This is a budget amendment to increase the expenditures in the general fund for Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport in the amount of $133,333. And this amount will come out of the county reserves. It will decrease the county reserves cash carryover by $133,333.
Bonnie, do you know why this? I think I do, for the better for the audience. What's this one for?
This was, this is due to, at the last county commissioner meeting, the airport came in under the board and asked for this. This was the two-thirds portion of the $200,000 I knew they were requesting. And so I was directed to offer the question.
I'll just make a comment. I had some feedback from what happened during the city council meeting in Rock Springs. I don't think it's very professional for the airport manager to make comments about anyone on this admission, which I understand did occur. That is unprofessional, unrequited. Just because we disagree with some issues, that doesn't mean that somebody should be making hotshots, so to speak, of any member of this commission. We strongly support that airport, have historically strongly supported that airport. And I think that was the only comment. And it's on matter of record, I understand, that the city council just like you, obviously you. Any other comments, questions? We'll open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, we close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I move that we accept Resolution 19-05-CL-05 for Sweetwater County Airport in the amount of $33,333.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wendling. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I vote against it. Or three, three votes, excuse me. Next, Bonnie.
All right. Next one. Resolution 19-05-CL-06. This budget amendment increases the expenditures in the general fund land use capital by $4,500 and it decreases the expenditures in the general fund land use operating by $4,500. So essentially, moving $4,500 from operating into capital in the land used for projects.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, close that portion of the hearing. You entertain a motion, commissioners?
Yeah, I'll move to, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution nineteen dash oh five C L dash oh six for forty-five hundred dollars to land use department.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioner Chairman? Commissioner Wendling?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this was for recent technology stuff here?
Yes, it's for two new computers and two cameras that are severely outdated, so. For code enforcement. Any other question?
Did I get a motion?
I did.
I didn't pass a second. I did.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Last one. Resolution nineteen dash zero five dash C L dash zero seven. This budget amendment increases the expenditures in the impact tax fund by three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents, and it also increases the revenue in the impact tax fund by three hundred and four thousand dollars, three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Are there questions on this one?
There was you explaining.
Yes.
Tax assistance, please.
We found out, or I found out, about the Gateway West Impact Tax Project last November, December, so obviously after the budget was established. And so no money was budgeted for this project. However, at that time, it was scheduled that we received monthly installments starting in April. So we're to receive three monthly installments this fiscal year. And there are three departments within the county that that money is for. So these are for, this amount is for the departments that have money to be used for that impact.
And what is the total amount you received on the taxes since, on the Gateway West?
For the whole project, or?
The whole project. That we've been awarded through.
Rob, do you know?
Exactly. Should I even know that?
I think it's three point five million dollars in total, Mr. Chairman.
And this comes in as the taxes are paid, and as the project goes forward, and the taxes are paid?
Well, actually, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that we are going, and we'll talk about this later on in the day we have. I'm on the schedule to talk about this specific issue.
Can we talk about it in?
Okay. Just briefly, we're scheduled to receive fifteen monthly payments of this amount. They've divided it up over fifteen months. We'll receive an equal installment each month over the life of the project. But once again, we'll talk about that later today.
Yeah, that's kind of inconsistent to what I understand is going to be done with transvests. We'll put positions.
Okay.
Any comments before we move on? Thanks, Bonnie, for explaining that.
We'll open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Are there any public comments relative to this issue? Hearing none, close that portion of the hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move that we accept Resolution nineteen dash zero five dash C L dash zero seven, a budget amendment to the impact tax fund toward in three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars and twenty-three cents.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Wendling, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next, we have Commissioner comments and reports. Commissioner Smith, you get the first one.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, first, I didn't know Commissioner Wendling met her very well, very long. I appreciated talking to you yesterday. I commend Gary McLean on his comments as you mentioned, that really helped me to get to know him better. It was very well done, and I appreciate that. Could have asked for a lovely day. Sweetwater County yesterday, so. As far as boards and things that were going on, at Memorial Hospital, the EMS discussion continues. They have scheduled, I got put together quite a nice group, including some from Castle Rock, to discuss the EMS and the standings there. We have a consultant coming in. The first meeting will be on June tenth, which I get invited to as well. So we'll see how things progress there that they are. They also completed their community health needs assessments for Sweetwater County, and we'll be presenting that to us on June sixth, along with their budget. Parks and Rec actually made it to a meeting. They were pleased about that, and they were surprised, so it was good to be there. Funny thing was, they didn't have a forum, so we sat there for about twenty-five minutes. I wasn't the last one there, so. This never happens, and I wasn't sure. And then airport board meeting we have tomorrow. Things are progressing and going well, and. Still have any problems, Marty? Everything good in your room?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I will find you.
How about I tell you about it?
Oh, you are. Thank you.
Any else? Okay. Mr. Lloyd.
Like Jeff, I didn't know Don as well as long as many of the county employees or the other county commissioners, but I've known Don indirectly for years and watched him lead this community in many facets. And obviously, it was an honor and a privilege to be a commissioner for whatever time we were, and just seeing that, I think he definitely made a positive impact in this community of veterans, and throughout the constituencies for Sweetwater County. I think Don brought a positive and an ability to create cooperation, collaboration, and sometimes compromise in tough situations. And so we'll definitely be missed if his family is with us, with me in our thoughts and prayers. So it's been a busy couple of weeks. It felt like we haven't been here in three weeks, so it's been a pretty busy three weeks. I was able to meet with Bree Blasi in the museum. We have a board meeting this week, but I've been, I've only been at the museum, it is on there for a little bit, so I got to tour the museum and got to learn, meet all their staff, and really excited. It's amazing. They're doing a really, they're starting to build a John Wesley Powell exhibit in the museum. It looks like, Dave's doing a great job on it, is the exhibit coordinator. But it's a great group of people, and I'm excited to meet with them on Thursday night. Also, the library board meeting, as we've talked mostly about budget, and also some of the projects that Jason's done. I think one of the things I commend the library on is through years of the cuts, they've maintained a lower staff number, and they use additional funding they find to increase better programs in the library. You ever look at the library's quarterly newsletter, the stuff they put out for this community is amazing, and doing so very efficiently and on a small budget is, is pretty great by that group. Also, had a chance to meet with the events complex. And like I always joke, it seems like budget's the trend in most conversations, but we were able to see some progress on a couple of projects at the, at the events complex, specifically in creating some meeting rooms out off the exhibit, off the major hall, the major exhibit hall. And we've got some big events coming up in the summer with the National High School's final rodeo, and also an RV convention, and multiple other events. We did also hear at that meeting presentations, and so that, from the community. So that was a pretty good meeting, continuing to move forward with the events complex. Was absent at the Southwest, at the mental health board meeting, but I have set time to meet with Southwest Councilings CEO, Linda Aker, to get some information and see if there's anything I need to know there. Was able to meet, spend some time with Gary McLean, who gave me an update on the project he'd been working on for the salary review he was looking at. Also, attended the solid, just kind of wanted to more as a, as an observer, attended the solid waste district meeting where they looked at the Green and Ohio Center, and that was a very interesting and contentious meeting. Lastly, had the opportunity last week to, lastly, had the opportunity to attend the the river cutting on Middle Baxter Road with Commissioner Wendling, and asked Commissioner Wendling, and he invited me along on some economic development meetings last week, and was able to get a little more concept into economic developments. And just want to say that Middle Baxter Road is a, is a huge accomplishment for this county and both cities, and the long-term implications can be huge for us. And I think it's important that we find ways to continue to partner with all the communities of Sweetwater County, because I prefer believer that one entity, one county, one group can't make the differences we need to. And so that's a great culmination of a project, and just reminder that it is S E D C week, month, and they have start with some events tonight, so that's all I have. Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Lloyd. I had a issue, continuing issue with motocross at the events complex. Just so you'll know, the motocross, people think that's a great course, and they think that it's one of the best in the west, and people come from all over to participate in that. There's a, but they think, they think it doesn't receive the attention that should. There's problems with dust that should be evaded. They use the water, the brackish water from one of the old wells. I did bring that issue up with Larry, and he says, no, they won't be using it for, they've got a good well. They've got a new well.
They have a new well.
And it's, it's good water as opposed to the other water, the brackish one. They intend to start trying to use that water, or using that water for dust control, which will get rid of the smell that apparently exists. And I just asked that, I'm going to refer these complaints I get to you.
I'm going to order that, man.
Well, you're good, it's contentious meeting, so.
You know what, when I left the meeting, someone said, what's your opinion of this meeting? I said, I'm just watching.
So anyway, there's a good, their opinion is that it's a great, great course. It brings people in, sweet water county, and we could better capitalize on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they think that the events complex leans more towards horses than it do motorcycles. And Larry Lloyd assured me he doesn't like either one of them. But he understands, and understands that that's his, that's his responsibility to take care of both of them.
Any other questions?
I'm next, actually. Don's next, and I, I'd like to take a little business first before I try to, try to get into the comments. I'd like to make a lot of comments, but we have a responsibility. And I've asked our deputy county attorney to research this, and he has done this. And what it relates to is the commission's responsibility. What I asked John is, what's the commission's responsibility as to what we have to do, when we want it, when we have to do it, and when does the clock start ticking on, on our responsibilities? So John, I'll let you explain that and make sure that we, the commission, understands what our responsibilities are, et cetera.
Sure. Essentially, within twenty days of a vacancy, the board shall declare a vacancy. The timeframe for those twenty days will be after the next meeting. So the board has until the next meeting to declare a vacancy. I think that that's something for the board to consider, because these timeframes need to move so quickly. From there, once the board does declare a vacancy, then the Republican County Central Committee will have twenty days from there to present three different candidates to the board. And from there, the board shall choose among those three to fill said vacancy. And then there will be twenty days once we receive those three names for the board to then declare, pick one of those three. So that will be the process.
So we have twenty days to interview those three once they're, if those, and the clock will start ticking when we declare that vacancy. My recommendation to this board is that we do not declare that vacancy today. I think we need to give the Sweetwater County Republican Central Committee as much time as possible in order to select those three people, because I think it's a, it's a big responsibility. Whoever gets selected will be selected, it will be snowball votes. It's only happened one other time that I've been involved in, that was when Commissioner Oldfield passed. We need to allow them to get three names that are the best they can possibly come up with. So my recommendation to the board is that we don't, we do not declare a vacancy today that we do it at our next meeting. Is there any opposition or further comment, et cetera?
I may comment, I think out of respect for Don, as well as family, will be US Justice, wait till next board meeting.
May I ask Theresa a question?
Let me ask me. I'd rather not bring, I'd rather not bring the Republican Party into this discussion.
So if people are interested in that, are they, should they contact the Republican Central Committee, or should, or are they just going to?
That's why, that's why I don't think we want to talk to Theresa. It's not, it's not our responsibility, it's the Republican Central, Republican Party's responsibility to do that. And I don't think, in my opinion, we should influence that at this point.
Yeah, one more question. Go back to what, Mr. Chairman, what our deputy attorney had mentioned. He said the commission shall choose one of the three by statute. Is that accurate?
Well, that's what we're, that did not occur with Commissioner Oldfield. We had a three-person commission at that point in time, and when Commissioner Oldfield passed, Debbie Blythe and I, we were the other two, were on that commission. Joe was a Democrat, and I, I felt very strongly that John Patterson should have been appointed, because he had the experience, could have hit the ground running. Debbie felt that, she disagreed with that. She wanted Randy.
Walker.
Walker, Randy Walker, to fill that position. We argued and argued and argued, and she was dealing with a strong, I had a Finlander, and I was dealing with a very strong, I better be careful how I, a strong-willed person. And we couldn't come to a decision, so it went to the judges, and Judge James selected Randy Walker to fill that vacancy. The same thing could happen here. Once it gets to us, it's going to take three votes to select. We could do it to Walker. Yes, again, I hope not. I really hope not. I think that's in our best interest. I hope that we can come to a decision, but it could, the same thing could happen. But that's the responsibility of the Sweetwater County Republican Central Committee to do that. Once we declare the vacancy, we will send a letter immediately to that committee advising that we have declared a vacancy, we may have, if he could not. Mr. Bailey will draft that letter, or at least review it, and give it to them, explain to them the way we see it.
Any other questions on this?
I'll try to talk about Don now. I've had the privilege of working with Don for a long, long while. Our paths crossed when we were both on the Joint Powers Water Board many years ago. And that's when I realized what a gentleman that Don Van Meere was. We worked extremely well there. I went on to become a commissioner. John, Don continued to work on that, and then we selected him with this, this commission selected Don to chair the Veterans Administration. We hired him to do that. And the thing that Gary didn't say yesterday, that I did should have said, is that this commission recognized that we should take care of the veterans, all of our veterans in Sweetwater County. But it came through John, Don, that we have a bigger responsibility to that, as not only a Sweetwater County, but as a nation, to take care of our veterans. So what we decided, this commission decided with Don's leadership, is that we would take care of our veterans no matter where they were in southwestern Wyoming. And what our intent was, is to take care of them, Sublet, Lincoln, and Wynn Counties, and possibly Carvin County. Well, we couldn't get. Well, we couldn't get, we couldn't get that done. We nearly had, you ended it to join in, but we ended up with just Sublet County, Lincoln County and Sweetwater County. But we were driving that bus and Don Van Meter was the bus driver. He made things happen. He ran those offices into his various locations and really did just an outstanding job for veterans. And as you know, he was a veteran. Served during the Vietnam War and this is a little sideline I found out just recently that Don was also, his career in Vietnam was also doused with the ancient orange as was Joe Oldfield. Just wondering if that's the commentary I'm putting to him. But both of them gave their lives in the service in their country. Joe was an outstanding commissioner, an outstanding gentleman. As you know, Bruce was a teacher and Don just carried on that tradition. Once he got into the commission, he was a team player. And I don't say that as saying that he always just voted for Don. Don was his own man. He was a, he was an officer in military and you could see that he was a very disciplined individual. And I worked extremely well with him. We didn't always agree, but he was always a real one, disagree when we had a disagreement. I can't say enough about how fortunate that Sweetwater County was to have Don Van Meter. And I realize that the quality of the individual, background the individual has to step forward to serve on this mission is extremely important. He was a very intelligent guy. He was extremely well educated and he was extremely disciplined. He knew what the responsibilities he carried were. He knew what the objectives of this commission were and he helped us get there. And I'll always appreciate that. I'll always respect him. I'm a better man. Anyway, I'll go. Try to move on to something else. Anyway, we'll miss you. Next, I have Chuck's report. And what Chuck's facility department says they have done. The district clerk's painting is completed. The county clerk painting is completed. The aeromodeller's facility, the removal of the improvements has begun. And Doc, did you have a specific question?
No, I just wondered what status was. If you've answered, thank you very much.
Yeah, that has started. The snow had to get off of that, so it's been delayed somewhat. And next he has a Lagoon Drive feasibility study. Meeting was held with the architectural firm and Whiteotta and Gene was involved in that and Chuck. And what issue is there is we want to make sure we're clear on whether we might want to relocate those facilities if we do go forward with it and what our, what our options are. And that was the purpose of that meeting. And then there's a West Side Sewer District meeting to discuss issues at the Foothill Pump Station is being scheduled. There's an issue there that needs to be resolved for the county's name. So any questions on the facilities portion? Next on the 19th, we had our industrial signing commission meeting, the final, the final meeting in Saratoga and it went extremely well. And I'd like to give credit to the people, preparation for that meeting that was done from Eric who chaired that and helped lead that, that responsibility. We had the sheriff's department, fire department, landfill people and the mom setter, mom setter themselves, Roden Bridge, Gene was involved in that. The bottom line is we were extremely well for that, well prepared for that final meeting. And, and I had the responsibility of carrying forward the message and the information that was put forward by that committee. And I was very happy to do that. I didn't realize Chris Harry. Eric assured me that it wasn't going to be, it would be okay as he said. Cave walk and very misleading. Anyway, when I got forward, fortunately I was well prepared. Everybody heard me for that. And it went well, well. I tell this guy the name Ken Latta, it was Ken Lattes. Eric didn't warn me about that. He was pretty well molded. He was very, very, he was very, very, in my opinion, anti-Sweetwater County as historically has been the case in the other part of the state. It was, it was pretty grueling. I think I did a reasonable job of answering his questions. What we were after is $5,320,000 and some change dollars for the impacts that it caused by Transliss Powerline. So when it was all over and the vote was taken, there were six people, or seven people on that, including the chairman. And the vote was six to one in favor of Sweetwater County. And so we got the $5,320,000 that Bonnie was talking about, the big gateway west. So this will be another, another $5,320,000 that we will, to mitigate the impacts that are going to cause by that, by that project. So I'm very, very pleased with that. I finally recovered from the wounds that I suffered because of that. Eric will, he'll suffer those wounds in the next, next period of time from this meeting. It was likely for those votes, vote during when he's slaughtered. Bottom line is, bottom line is, is Sweetwater, we were opposed to the route that was taken for that line. They chose a different route for that. We chose a different one. But we made the case that that line does nothing for Sweetwater County. Forty percent of that line since Sweetwater County, sixty percent of it's in Carbon County. And we prevailed on it. I very appreciate all of that. I very appreciate it with the state for allowing that to happen. I appreciate that all the people participated in preparing the commission and the fire people. It's going to work well. It's going to work well as that project goes forward. It's my understanding that on that project, and I won't say this because it needs discussion further with, with our county treasurer, is that it's my understanding as the project starts and the sales taxes are paid, we are, we will get our monies back from them as the project progresses. That causes somewhat of a problem for Sweetwater County. You cannot, you cannot go buy a piece of equipment, for example, and, and pay for it as the taxes come in. So we are going to have to comprehend this in the budgeting process so that we get those, because we've got to have the equipment, the people, the minute that project starts to cover the security, fire and, and all of the issues that we have raised during this process and mitigating. So that's going to cause some budgeting issues and Bonnie probably is, we'll rely on that. So Bonnie, I'd say you need to understand what we, what we ask for and what we're going to get and what we're going, how we're going to have that. Fire people, the sheriff, Roden Bridge, Eric's going to have to tell us when we need those and we're going to have to budget for them because we're going to have to, in essence, finance it as the funds, as the funds come in. But it went well and I, I think it's a credit to the people that we have on staff. On the first, I met with federal agencies as I normally do and there was a little bit of thing that came up very recently. And Mark's on here. After we had the federal agencies, entities here and we made their presentations at Mark's urging, we followed up with a thank you letter for, for them being here. And in this meeting on the first, those people, we gave it how appreciative we were of those letters because they went up upstream in their organizations and their comment was that just doesn't happen. Our federal agencies don't give favorable comments normally, especially to the L A guys. But they were very appreciative of that and let them comment for, for Mark. He's the one who should have, can do a very, very good job of that. Again, following up on, on Mark, this issue with appointment to the State Water Commission was still, the position has still not been fulfilled. And I spoke endless damn late. He put forward Mark's need to be appointed to that. And it hasn't occurred yet. My concern was, and I offered to withstand and, with Mark, to have us write a letter to the governor to try to get Mark appointed to that water commission. Water is extremely important in Sweetwater County. If we get somebody on that, that commission, it would be in our best interest. And Mark had made a call to Cheyenne, to the person that's involved with the government and was assured that it's a slow process and it's still going forward. The thing I note is Mark has been recommended because he's a Democrat and because there's appointments that are politically driven and Mark, that's why Stan, Stan made that recommendation. So I think that I really hope that that goes through. And.
Question.
Doc?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the letter, thoughts?
Well, in Mark's conversation, I offered we would do that. And if you will, if this commission feels strong enough to do, we could still do it. He felt he's still, still in the running. I told him that my history, when things drag out like this, it's more good. They're trying to find a way not to select you is what I tried to tell Mark. If you're so inclined, we'll, we'll have the letter drafted to the governor requesting that consensus.
Sign it.
We'll all sign it?
All sign it.
I think we should all sign it.
We should. Okay. I think it's a great, great idea. There's no assurance that whoever the baby that came father, they're going to take.
Well, no, the thing I've always said about Governor Dean is he at least knows Sweetwater County's soul here. And maybe Governor Holden does too, but I don't know. Time will tell. So I think it probably would be worthwhile for us to do that. I'll have that drafted when I reach the next meeting.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have, have for now. So next we have, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you presented everything regarding Commissioner Van Meter very well. Thank you for doing that. Again, condolences to the family as I look forward. Very lost Sweetwater County. I've always said he exemplifies service. Nobody does better than he does his entire life. But thank you for staying close to him. So a special thank you out to the county staff that helped Van Meter through these hard times. We appreciate that.
Always on work. Young at heart, golden hour, still working very hard. Of course, this time of year, they're, they're a lot of budget work and preparing. And I think they've submitted a petition already by you at this last week, so we'll be able to start with that. Last night, we met for four hours with community service block grant, CSPG Tripartite Board. And due to the state's fine work, we're kind of in limbo until we get final dollars because we found out just before our meeting that the dollars that we were working with could be in air. So we both were just kind of tabled our decision until we get the exact dollars. Prusino will let us know. And also through Tripartite, we're looking on need assessment for the community and the area of poverty and support. So that's moving forward and we'll be together. Hopefully have something that'll come before the commission at some time, sometime to approve for the community service block grant. Conservation District, with that meeting, I got a packet of pictures that were put together by Dennis Doncaster, hydrologist with B O M, kind of showing the Bitter Creek drop structure overview from beginning till now and the work that's been done. It's a great chronological, I don't know whether you say packet, whatever. But when it's down, I'll make sure that Mark gets it because he keeps those things on file. But it's very interesting to look at for you as other commissioners. With this last thing, this is for you, Mr. Chairman. Your requests have not gone unheard, but you're kind of always wondering about the tamarisk along the Bitter Creek.
Yes.
And that question I posed and our fine hydrologist, Dennis Doncaster with the B O M, has finally come forward and he says there was a release, one release of beetles that do feed on tamarisk, killed them. And that was in 2010. Do you want to add?
Recently, I think I remember.
Recently, but yeah.
No, I was unaware. It was in 2010. I was not clear as to where they put them. I'd like to watch that.
Okay, I've got that located here. I've got it highlighted. So my folks will see it real clear. But first, there's one release at a point about halfway between Rock Springs and Green River. And the second release is the confluence of butter in the bitter creeks. And then there's a little bit more about how the beetle's doing, but Dennis says they're out there working hard. The results of their work would be better if we had a longer season for them to gnaw on those trees a little bit. But as the group gets bigger, more will get eaten. I, a good problem would be to have, as Dennis recommended, is Conservation District, County never would have the great problem of having to figure out how to put some kind of plant basin to help stabilize the water banks of the creek. But here we go, sir, for you specifically, working on tamarisk since 2010. And that's most recent evidence they are working out there. We just want to see a great amount.
Well, these beetles, you know, I'm pleased with this. But I think that's good they're trying to, that's B O M's union of the, of the public. But they, you know, the tamarisk, in my opinion, is a major problem. They think the Russian olive's on. I'm opposed to what they do with Russian olives. I'm opposed to what they're doing with it. Are thinning the juniper. When you've got those tamarisk, all you have to do is go look, just go look what's happening to the riverbed on the Bitter Creek. Right in Rock Springs, right downtown. They're almost clogging the channel. I didn't think they were doing anything about it. Glad to hear it.
Yeah, I'm glad. Dennis was right on it. It's right up Dennis's alley.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
He is. He's a great guy. Also, I did attend the industrial signing hearing and I think you were being kind of generous with what you went out there. I literally say you were sacrificed. John was sitting next to you and to hold me together, but you didn't need that. But yeah, there was attack on Sweetwater County, but I believe the attack also would be on anybody that approaches this type of thing. But again, you did very well, John, Eric, Gene, Mike, everybody that was involved in the poor stuff. Great job, but yeah, you, he had made up his mind, didn't matter what you were saying. So you did well and kept your focus on the outcomes, as the outcome was, Sweetwater County did very good job, Transliss. Also, must be the weeks of, or end of the month for contentious boards. And this one wasn't as contentious. It could have been, but it didn't work out that way. I did 10 Eden Valley Waste Board meeting this last week. And of course, I thank Eric for coming out there as well. But if you happen to read anything that comes out of them, I mean, there, there was a belief when you read it that they'll no longer take trash from the pit. Well, if you read it the way it was written, you presume that the whole entire waste facility was getting shut down. But no, just the pit directly, no longer dumping in the pit after June 14. But there. But their facility for taking waste and transferring it to Waste District One is all in place. They're working hard, doing things to meet the needs of everybody in Farceen Waste District. So that meeting had some good questions, good information given out. People went away from there very satisfied with the direction they were going to go and that they knew it was going to take a little more work. So it went very well.
Yeah, sure. It was my first payback there, because I got that contentious call. I'm sorry, he drugged you alone. Because I knew that was going to get contentious, so I asked him.
Let me do it. So, you know, and I got an email that said, you know, it's going to be an interesting meeting, are you going to make it? So Eric did drag me. Eric thought he was all by himself, could have walked through the door and saw me sitting there. But again, too, I do know Eric, they didn't know who you were. Oh, many questions. Thought you were a reporter. And if that's the case, you know, be careful, you may get recruited. But anyhow, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I did very well.
I appreciate you doing that as well. That was, as you know, was contentious. Sounds like you.
They did a good job. I have my hands off to them as we move forward. Again, last Thursday, Friday, I did go into Lander. I did come back Thursday night to go into Conservation District meeting and went back Friday morning for the Joint Revenue Committee meeting. And the topics dealing with that, of course, is always additional taxes, you know, they're looking at tax studies and legislation to hold local governments harmless on misdirected sales tax payments. That came up again through our county cap. I guess it occurred again, they didn't say where, or with whom. They did mention that Friday morning. Vapor products took a whole session Thursday morning, I mean, from 8:30 till noon. No taxation yet on vapor products. And they're trying to figure out how they can do it. But what's even more interesting that was uncovered is apparently there's 15 to 16 vapor sales businesses that, believe it or not, manufacture their own vapor products. And the look on those people, legislators faces when you realize with no oversight. So looking interesting in July, as they meet again, and of course, they're looking at government property tax exemption and those types of things. So it's a good thing, and of course, all this stuff will be discussed this week at the Spring County Commissioner Association meeting, Cody, and the Revenue Committee and that type of thing, tobacco taxation. So that was a very good one to be at, a good one to monitor. Also, just a reminder, as everyone's been hearing, as much as it's national economic development, we, the SEDC Economic Development Coalition, Sweetwater, has taken it a step further and is doing its economic development activities all month, starting tonight. It's an open house, social time and training transfer for anybody who wishes to attend. And then also, just as a follow-up, because, and I'll just wear this one, my four week presentation with SEDC at our last meeting with direction regarding what they're doing. They're going to come in at our next meeting and bring for the sacred learning of which was up today, SEDC, and a better job of what I tried to present at the last meeting. So they'll be here this time. With that, that concludes my report. We'll go for any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Just a comment, a request, and this is an interesting stat, just like, that I think you're the only one who will go over, is that, I mean, I'm the one who will give. So I ask that you represent us and pass on the board of directors also.
Okay.
If you want to.
Yeah, tomorrow, I will be able to make.
I would be glad to. Yeah, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Around these days, I mean, my personal life factor order, I do some of this.
All right. But I'll be glad.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Here, report. Next, this is going to be interesting, Tab D, oh, wait a minute, county residents' concerns. Are there any county residents' concerns? Now is your time to voice your concerns, if you have any in the county. Are there any county resident's concerns? During that, what was that portion of? Next, the most, probably the most interesting thing we're going to have today is our budget request, budget funding.
Interesting, I didn't know accountants were interesting.
Absolutely, very much so, especially when they bring numbers.
Good morning, again, Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I am here to present the fiscal year 2020 budget requests, and this is just in accordance to the state statute 16 dash 4 dash 104. As of November before May 15, the budget officer shall prepare a requested budget for each fund and file the requested budget with the governing body. So that's all we're doing today. I did receive all of the budget requests, and provided in your packet was a list of what those requests were. And there will be more comparative information at our budget workshops following the next three meetings. This is just simply a statutory requirement that these are presented to you. Are there any questions on it?
Yeah, one question. This grand total of 112,36,690 and 0.06, I'm surprised at how closely you get that. But how does that number compare to last year?
I would have to look. I assume that it's up slightly.
Slightly, that's the word I've heard before. What's slightly when you're talking about maybe $100?
You know, I would have to look. I haven't done any comparative information yet. We just received the requests, and so it was just a matter of getting these on here for you and then also getting the worksheets together for that budget binder. Which leads me to my next question. Which of you would like one of those big budget binders that are about that thing that have all the requests, the paper requests?
I think we should have one, at least. If everybody wants, that's fine. We used to get that and every one of, that's how we did it. But I'll take one when we had it that way, it was more accurate than happens today. So.
They're all, it's up there, and I got all of the requests on the End Drive yesterday. So they're all, everything that's in that binder is on the End Drive. But if you want a paper copy, I'd be happy to make one for you and get that to you next week.
I get more space. I'll get, I'll get that. The End Drive, we're going to do it together. Will you prepare one?
I will prepare one for you. Is there anyone else that would like one?
Roy said we'll bring this out for the budget meetings.
What was that?
Bring this out at this for the budget meetings as well. And my slide group, the slide will have it.
Sometimes it's handy to take notes on the paper.
That's right, that's exactly.
I make one for myself.
And the other question we were going to have decide, especially if the commissioners asked how you wanted to look at this, when she prepares that comparison, that's the document that's most important to me. She gives us the most recent year, how far we've been back.
I do year to, so it'll be year to date for the current fiscal year in 19, and then I'll do actuals for 18 and 17.
See, that's where you really can see what's going on. And then the next question that we'll have to answer for Bonnie is, do we want to bring all of the entities in? Or after you see that document, you see that, for example, if one of them is the same this year as it was last year, like Crisina's probably going to be, because Crisina's easy and she brings money in, so we don't argue with her. Everybody else we argue with. So we look at that and we decide, you know, do we need, is there a need to bring any of these other entities in? It makes it a lot easier to limit to those departments that are asking for security and come on.
Sure.
So let me think of that, just give Bonnie that feedback.
And the next meeting is when I'll have, at the next budget workshop, well, the first budget workshop, which will be following the next commissioner meeting. That's where we'll have that information. It'll be summarized comparative information for all of the requests. And at that point, we can go through those individually, and you can decide who you want to meet with. And then we will meet with them at the budget workshop at the, following the first commissioner meeting in June. That's where we'll schedule.
I'd just make a general comment to prevent Bonnie's benefit is that prior to Bonnie, this process was very, very different. And we got written up for every year when we needed somebody like Bonnie. And Bonnie got Bonnie. And this process is 29 days, 19. It's just, it's much, much easier. And I think it's also the best interest of all Sweetwater County's taxpayers that we do a better job of working on it. Any other questions?
Just want, Bonnie had a chance to get on the End Drive last night, you start to look through it, some of that old comparison stuff is already in that from some of the outside agencies, because I think that was a requirement. So that, I was going to say, that was a great, a lot of good information last night we started.
It is in detail in there, and that's what makes it that, book fits that fit. But you'll get to see some summarized information, it's only a couple pages with that comparative information. So I think it's just easier to look at as a whole sometimes when you have all of that comparative information, it gets a little overwhelming.
And when Kins systems all go down, I'll be the only one that knows what's going on.
And me, because I always have copies.
Walked in the hall with our candles. The hall is open. Okay, I got it, you're right, in the nick of time. Anything else, Bonnie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Bonnie.
Yes.
You know, you said something very interesting, Bonnie, because when a system goes down, it's interesting. And just Donald, you know, it does go down, we only have a, you know, going to the End Drive, it's down, they'll do some good. What about putting it on the flash drive? A question.
I can do that. Do you want, I mean, I do that for the meetings anyway, because I can't access it through here. But for some reason, I can't get on the End Drive in here. So I put it on a, on a flash drive, but would you prefer it by?
Yeah, I'd put it on the End Drive, but sit on a flash drive as well.
For you?
For me, yeah.
Okay. I can do that. Does anyone else want it on a flash drive?
Who?
What? Bonnie wants a paper copy, I know that.
Sorry. Give him a flash drive. Sorry, man.
Okay. Any other requests?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a request for approval for a 24-hour malt beverage permit for the Jim Bridger Power Plant Employee Picnic on July 12, 2010. Cindy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Johnson and Commissioners. We have a request for approval for a 24-hour malt beverage permit for the Jim Bridger Power Plant Employee Picnic on July 12. The Jim Bridger Activities Committee submitted the request.
Does this say where they're going to hold it by any chance?
Um, it's.
Are we?
Yeah, I know.
Crossroads.
Crossroads, okay. Oh, Crossroads West Park. I'm not trying to read.
Any issues with this? Something? Yeah. They're, they're, they're obviously, there's something like, I wish you would have cleared your line, that's your activity. Between the, right now, soon. I entertain motion to approve the request for a 24-hour malt beverage catering on the Bitter Creek Jim Bridger Power Plant Employee Picnic. Some, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, do we have a second? Second, like Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion? Lloyd, they both, they both spoke. I hear a bit around a little kid. Any further discussion? Are you in all of the favor of motion indicating a second? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, you know. Just a question, we need to go back and do a motion for the budget?
No, it doesn't require action.
Next, we have, we have a solid waste disposing district number one board appointment. Do you find that, that tab, yes, package? You had a chance to look at those, and any thoughts on that? Why don't we go by and just see what your preference might be, and then we'll go further and see what we've got. You want to go first?
I think one of the nice things about the contentious meeting I attended was it did create some applications for the solid waste district, because those positions have been open for a point of time. And just looking through the applications, I thought it was interesting and good information was, more information was provided by a couple of the candidates with a letter of interest. And that's always where I kind of end up kind of favoring. So I, I thought that RJ Piper's application was very well thought and sent out was one I looked at. And then also, Amy Cox provided some good information, but also Larissa Powell. So I, you know, two openings, and based upon the information provided, RJ and Larissa were quite solid candidates. But it is good to see a board that was getting no candidates now have a surplus of candidates.
And you also had 10 candidates, did you say?
Yep.
Just for the record, acknowledge the. What are your thoughts?
Of the, of the five, only one I know personally is Larissa Powell. Highly recommend her. Much like Commissioner Lloyd, it is helpful when we don't know people personally to have the letter of interest to, to see their qualifications and see them express their interest on paper. So again, I much like Commissioner Lloyd, but I can also speak very highly of Larissa Powell. Because we.
They teach you from my daughter. So, so you're at Piper and April, is that where you're at?
I've got April and then.
We're sure. I have to?
Yeah.
Come back to me. I, I've looked at them also, and I know RJ and he's been in these chambers very frequently as how historically whatever he's done has done well. So I like RJ Piper, and I can go off between the other two, April and Cox. The other two that I would love.
Yeah, I, looking at all five of them, in case anybody's wondering, Ms. Tammy Bell does, I believe is, is, is she, she's not, she.
Might be.
I think so, so, yeah, and so just, yeah, put a name with the face, but to get to, I, you know, enjoy the idea that April has more information. So not much on Mr. O'Brien or, I know Tammy is, but I agree, the three that provide that information are very good. The, of course, RJ Piper's been here several times, as you said, Mr. Chairman. Larissa Powell, you know, it's, it's that connection of the school tied into, you know, it's environmental science. Ms. Powell's also shown an interest in Conservation District, wanting to work with them, but not them as individually, they want their students involved. She wants her students in environmental science involved, because I read everything. So I just seek that connection of getting young people to start buying into helping their community grow so it's better for them later in life. I don't think you get that much better place than putting school kids in, getting them connected. She's a teacher, of course. So I, three strong candidate, all strong candidates with information on Amy, Larissa, Richard are very good. I would lean in the direction of RJ or Richard Piper and Larissa Powell.
Okay, that's you.
I agree with you. We did three, so did you take on mine?
Yeah.
Well.
No, RJ as well. So I entertain a motion. You heard what Tommy O'Neal was.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint RJ Piper to solid waste disposable district number one.
I'll second that. You want to do it one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of RJ Piper indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Continue to say. Yeah, I'll make a motion also that we appoint Larissa Pell to solid waste district, disposable district number one in Rock Springs.
We have a motion for Ms. Pell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Any in all those in favor of Larissa indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Did you get that? Then, Sally. So you ready for a break?
Tab F, no wait. Tab Genie, mail machine lease upgrade. Marty.
Good morning, commissioners. Just to kind of give you guys, for those of you that are actually, this is for Doc as well, who's in Wayne. As you know, you cannot own a postage machine, and so that's one of our other hats that we wear in my office is we take care of the central mailing system within the county. And in doing so, we have a large postage machine that we maintain and monitor over here in the courthouse that is used by all county departments within the courthouse. It has an accounting system on it. We can monitor the machine like from our computers in our office, print reports of how much each department's using, load the funds right onto the machine from there, and so forth. So it's hooked up to our network, if you will. We only have access to all of that. Each department is getting the codes and security codes to get in to meter their mail, and so you can't really run mail on a different account. We also have a small machine over in the Rock Springs. It used to be in the Rock Springs office building, but since the transition to the Justice Center, we have moved that machine into actually our building, like when you come in the door there where the reception area is. We have a small postage machine there as well that the attorneys, the sheriff, do not probation, those areas in Rock Springs come over and can meter the mail. We also take the mail every day. That's one of our other jobs is, we used to have it in, we remember that the postmaster would pick up the mail at the end of the day and take it. With their cutbacks, they will not, no longer stop and do that. And believe me, we went all the way to Denver trying to say, really? As much mail as the county sends out, you won't pick up our mail? They'll pick it up if it's in the box when the mailman or mailman delivers, but we will not come back in for that but second. So every day we, I send somebody over, they pick up all the county outgoing mail and deliver it to the post office. But with that, as you know, you cannot own a postage machine. It's a meter, you cannot physically own it. So we have to lease them. And those leases usually, you can set the lease amount up for however long you want. We chose to do it for five years. That seemed to work. That way, every time the lease comes due, they come in, they upgrade the lease, they change out all of the equipment, and we get new equipment. And with that lease, they maintain, like if a board goes bad in machines or whatever, if they need cleaned, they do PMs on them. We just call, they come in, we do the PM, clean the machine, fix any errors or issues we have, and move forward. So we're always exchanging out the machines and getting, if you will, the latest rates. So with that, I've had John review the lease agreement. He had a small question about payment. We pay in arrears, so we'll make our final payment on the lease we're in at the end of this month, and then we'll go through months in the payment on the equipment that they will install as soon as they get the, if the board so chooses to approve this. They'll exchange the equipment, by the way. So we'll have new equipment before we even start making payments. With that, it's, on the lease documents, it shows that we pay $1,144.84 a month, but we pay that quarterly, which breaks down to $3,434.52. I was working with Cindy to get this into the budget, but the good thing about it is they haven't changed the machines that drastically that all our current supplies, which are very expensive, will work on both of these new machines that they're going to install. So we didn't have to increase any of that. So we'll be able to just change out the machines and move forward.
Ready for a question?
Yes.
They turn this, they bring this binder?
Yes.
So the way we would address this is proposal to upgrade the existing machines for a binder, binder period as requested by purchasing the partner.
Yes, and I'll write with chairman. See, they understand me. It's probably you that has a question.
I've had to work with you longer.
You've got to work with him longer.
Exactly.
Could you, could you clarify the dollar amount?
Yes, so it's $1,144.84 a month, and we pay that on a quarterly basis. So it's $3,434.52.
How does that compare with your 70% increase?
It's a hundred dollars and twenty cents increase from the Rock Springs. For a quarter. See, I do do my job once in a while. Can't win.
I'm sure glad you came by.
Yeah.
We have two items that your name is on. It's like I did.
He's nice. You should take lessons from him. He's very nice.
That's the one he kept after hearing.
She's awesome.
See? Did you hear that?
He's new. Any other questions? So if you can articulate that somewhat, please do so.
I would, I'll give it a shot. Okay. I so move to approve the purchase and upgrade of a five-year mail machine lease upgrade for the purchasing department and to allow the chairman to sign with that lease.
What word you know that should be there? Purchase?
Oh, that's right. To go into agreement to lease a mail machine upgrade for a five-year contract through the purchasing department, and the chairman can sign.
You have a second? Second, Mr. Smith. Motion by Commissioner, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Next, we have Dominion Energy Type A license, Reliance Road, CR number 42. Mr. Legerzky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Type A license, which people have to get or utilities have to get anytime they're within a right-of-way crossing our road. Vance with Quest or Dominion is actually sitting in the back answering technical questions. But what this is for is, if you remember, two years ago, they came along JY Road from Yellowstone and upgraded the feed into Reliance. They also did a high-pressure gas line from the block valve that's situated on foothill to get some more stuff out to the north side of town in anticipation for more demand and everything out there. This is a continuation. We want to upgrade the line, going right now into Rock Springs Energy. We have plans to continue into the, or into the upper camp eventually. They'll stub it out. And this is a basic license that we need because it is such a large project. I bring these in front of you just a, when we're somebody just digging on the road, I typically don't, but with this being such a large project, if you guys might get questions, I bring this in front of you. The plans are there. The men have been very good with, work with it. You know, everybody from Quest are that we've dealt with for years has been there. So this, I use it as a problem. I've been working with their main person because we're actually overlaying that road. If you guys have worked the contract today, so there'll be a little bit of coordination with our department and them to make sure that the two contractors don't get in each other's ways. But other than that, I'd like a motion to allow the public works director to be able to sign this lease once all the required documentation is finalized. They still have a couple things to clean up on their client for nothing much.
You've heard the presentation. Any questions, Mr. Legerzky? She have not entertained a motion to approve the request to allow Mr. Legerzky to sign the required documents. I would say that most like Commissioner Smith, we have a second motion. Second, Commissioner Whedon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we still have Mr. Legerzky, BLM Right-of-Way Grant Serial Number Wyw109335 for Gannett Drive, CR number 1106.
Well, we're issuing the BLM Right-of-Way Grant for this. About three months ago, we put in the grant application that you did sign. This is for Gannett Drive from the west side of Summit. And what this was, they're on typically on a 25 or a 30-year term, and this one actually lapsed, and they, we renew them quite frequently. The nice thing about it is with the little bit of change over at BLM, things right now are not on terms anymore. They're for indefinite period of time, which is a great thing. So we don't have to go through this. I won't have to go through it in 30 years again, but Mr. Johnson, I have to.
Very good.
So what I'm asking for is the approval of the BLM Right-of-Way Wyw109335 for Gannett Drive. Allow the chairman to sign that all requirements.
You've heard the request. Hearing none, I entertain the motion to, as requested by Mr. Legerzky.
I'm trying to tee. Okay. I want to approve the 2019 asphalt overlay project.
No, not that. That's not the one.
I'll get you covered.
You have the coverage now.
I would move that we approve the BLM Right-of-Way Wyw109335 for Gannett Drive County Road, approved 1106, and allow the chairman to sign all documentation. That is it.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Whedon, motion by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Carry on, Mr. Smith.
This is the grant application, which actually precedes the grant serial number for Yellowstone Road. As you guys know, we're working on upgrading that portion of road from the Stasnos Ranch all the way up to 191. It's about 95% design. This has kind of lasted a little bit. An interesting thing on this road is it was actually given to us by the State Highway Commission back in 1932. So it's a long, long time. It used to be the road that actually went to Plundale. But when they did the 191 north, they reconstructed everything. The interesting thing about that is BLM, this was underneath our RS2477 road, and when we upgrade this, they would just like to finalize it with their new paperwork. It's basically a formality. They're not going outside the right-of-way. We're not asking for any bigger right-of-way on this. It's just more of a formality to get it up to date in their current system. Again, what we ask for is for this right-of-way to be in an indefinite time period, so we won't have to go through this too.
You've heard the presentation. Any questions?
Definitely be approved for everyone who used to.
Yes.
Industry traffic.
Yes. And if you guys have looked at the plans in there, it's very nice. The plan said upgrading the road, fixing the drainage, additional signage out there. Wydott's been very cooperative with the little bit of realignment we want to do in 191 to make that more visible and easier to negotiate, so.
All right. I went out there just within the last week to see where that sign was up there yet. It's not. But you're, actually, you won't lose your vehicle in it now.
No, but you've got to be careful.
You've got to be careful.
You've got to be careful.
It really isn't easy.
Yes.
Just to give you a little history on that road, it went to JY Road, which initially I was somewhat opposed to. Didn't matter because I lost the argument again. I usually do. But the purpose of the JY Road was to take all of the traffic off of this road we're talking about. And I knew then what was going to happen. The only people that really benefits is Reliance, people in Reliance, you know. I won't go further than that because she's sitting behind you. But anyway, you know, that hasn't happened. That traffic still is headed north right at that road, and it's got to, it's got to have a, it's got to be well known. It has to hopefully pull something. It is, and I appreciate what you do.
We're, just so you guys know, we're actually going through the final engineering assignment. We're looking at two different options of what to do actually with the subgrade. The Geo-Tech report found out the subgrade was lacking in that area. It's just a mixture of, I don't want to say garbage soil, but that's basically what it is. We don't have a really good structural soil in Tubar County, but everything coming off of White Mountain. So the engineering firm actually hired a guy that specializes in doing this, and looking at it, we might be able to save, on what my estimate was about $300,000 if we go with the option and still maintain the same structural integrity by doing full depth reclamation like they did on Duvernell and do something similar to that. So.
It's an important road.
Yes.
How did you determine it was done in 32 years?
Found, we actually found the stuff. Yeah, we actually found everything down there. We actually have road files on every single road.
So that was a dirt road before 32, is that what you're saying? Or it had to have been?
It was. Yeah, it was. But that's when the Highway Commission actually took it and gave it to us, and there was actually a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners to accept it.
And you found it?
Mm-hmm.
Does sound like, sign that for the commission.
I don't think so.
You guys are terrible.
I don't know, but if you want me to, I can email you our documentation.
I don't know. I'm going to get a chance.
Yeah, come down and collect it and pull it out from those boxes.
So you've heard the request. What's your question?
I'll give it a shot, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the BLM Right-of-Way Grant for a portion of CR number 58 Yellowstone Road and allow the chairman to sign application and all related documentation.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Motion by Commissioner Whedon. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Think you're still going. Would you?
What you have before you, commissioners, is we have a public bid opening for the 2019 asphalt overlay project. We do one of these a year or try to. This comes out of the additional fuel tax revenue that we do receive from there that is held into two separate accounts within Logan Bridge for this. It's used for projects like this. We received three bids. The bids came in. They were fairly comparable for where they are and everything like that. The roads that we are redoing is Reliance Road from where Wydott overlated all the way to South Road, which is the road that takes off to the tipple. We're milling off two inches, putting back three and a half, also doing some patching and some work within the ditches and stuff like that to get it drilling a little bit better. Little portion of Witten Road, and then also the foothill section between Signal and Gannett. We're getting those. So those are the three roads that we're actually doing.
Any questions or comments on it? I'll make a comment. I'm very pleased to see that our local people know this. So that money will stay in the city work and enable a great job. Any other questions, Mr. Smith? Do I try this one?
If you want to pull up the letter, I actually wrote the recommendation.
I'm going to, as a G, so I moved, I would so move to award the bid of the 2019 asphalt overlay project to Kilbore Companies, also PBA, Lewis &amp; Lewis Incorporated in the sum of $733,647.98, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Perfect. I have a second, Mr. Smith. Motion by Commissioner Whedon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Then you're still up.
On the same day, we held another bid opening, and this is for the 2019 County Road Dust Control Project. We do one of these a year also. It's for the application of bag chloride on various county roads. This, to, just to be honest with you guys, is about $100,000 higher than last year, and the reason for that is we added about 28 miles. We've actually looked at a couple of roads that we were only doing eight miles on. Crookscap North, for example, that's getting heavy truck traffic. The first eight miles with this application has held up very well. So we actually extended it another 12 miles up to where the actual drilling is being completed. Movement Road is actually getting the same treatment. So what we're doing is reaching out and actually doing more roads. So it's not really, if you're looking on per ton, per square yard basis, it's actually cheaper. But it is, you know, if you guys compare last year to this year, actually the last probably eight years to this year, it's $100,000 over five. But the reason is because there's more road miles in there.
Questions? In recognition of my, or Commissioner, Pro-Commissioner, Mr. Cole, I compliment you on your engineer's estimate because it's very close.
Very close, but the bad part about it is I hate when the engineer's always first because they don't have any means to construct a project like this. Like Dust Buster said that they would do it.
Any other questions? Entertainer. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Whedon?
Motion to award the bid for the 2019 County Road Dust Control Project to Dust Buster's Enterprises Incorporated in the sum of $493,637.10, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Do we have a second, Mr. Whedon?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Whedon. Motion by Commissioner Whedon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor or motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Sure.
Mr. Legerzky, thank you. You made us all look very, very good by typing out those recommendations. No question. I appreciate it.
I learned it from Priscina wherever she was. She said a whole lot easier to just type it out.
Well done. Thank you.
She's a good teacher. She brings the document. Even we can, we can understand it.
Say, try to stir it up.
Much less to. So we need Gary for this next one. Maybe another break while we can find him.
He had a second.
Was he here? No. Give it a second, see if we can find him.
Morning, Gary.
You guys are vassing the efficiency.
Gene's keeping his head on track.
We'll keep it up. And next on our agenda, we have a request to restaff vacancy in the engineering department. Mr. Legerzky.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. We have had a vacancy for some time for this position. This is Assistant County Engineer position. This is Assistant County Engineer position, which we've traditionally had in trying to address some of the organizational issues. We had held off filling that position, trying to understand exactly what type of person was needed. I think we have some clarification and a better idea of that. And this process will probably take, you know, two, maybe three months to get the right person in that role. So we'd like to begin with that process. Your packets are the anticipated cost summary for that position. And we're requesting to restaff that and begin with your recruitment effort.
Just a question, Gary and Gene, what you're wanting to, what are you going to be looking for? What's the credentials for you to look for this individual?
Can I address that? What we'd really like is somebody not directly out of college, but with a three to five year's work experience, not quite D-level, but able to obtain it quickly. What we really need is somebody that has some contracting experience to be able to go out and deal with contractors and answer questions on different projects and stuff like that. You know, if you actually look at the Dust Control Project, you actually look at the Asphalt Overlay Project, Barry LaChance, and over the past couple of years, two contractors are working in there 90 miles apart. And when there's questions like that, it's nice to have somebody that can go in one direction and go in another direction, be able to deal with contractors, deal a little bit with the public. A lot of the other stuff is light design work. You know, we don't do a lot of heavy duty road design. That's left to the guys that have way bigger staff than us. But being able to analyze culverts where we have to replace them to make sure county roads get put in the right drainage, you know, stuff like that. When we replace a culvert, we always want to replace it with, just say an 18-inch within there. Common rhythm, go well at work, let's go for an 18-inch. Every culvert that's replaced, I actually take a look at it and do drainage analysis on it to make sure we get the right size culvert, right length, right part end, and proper end treatments on it. So stuff like that. And most people with, you know, three years of experience have that in there. People would be able to write specifications. Most of our specifications are fairly boilerplate, but you know, with new technology and new ways of doing stuff, you can be able to write those specifications. So people can understand them and, you know, somebody with that kind of experience would love to do that.
So I hear what you're saying. You're looking for a civil engineer with an attitude?
Yes, with some experience.
Yes. Any other questions that you're asking? This is a budgeted position.
Yes.
It has been budgeted.
And I, in my opinion, we really need, need to have that individual as, so it goes up with the knowledge that Gene brought to us.
One other, just to be clear, right now, we have no qualified backup for any of the areas that Gene's administering right now. And depending on the level of projects that are funded, that doesn't put the county in a very good position. And so that's one of the issues, we want to make sure we address.
Right, just like we just approved.
Right now, I mean, if you look at my plans in January, when I did my schedule for the year, hopefully in July, we'll have nine projects going in the county, not including what Road and Bridge is doing themselves. So part of that stuff going on. And Gary keeps talking about, "Be step off curb and get me a bike car," with no backup. That really scared him down the way he's already been.
I've seen you step off curbs. Why's to step off curbs?
Not too graceful.
As most of you know, obviously, the first job of management is to make sure that you've got a plan for the continuation of what you're doing. And we don't have that in this area. We're pretty good in most areas. This is not an area that we have that in. I think one of the things that's important with respect to Road and Bridge even, done a good job, Gene's done a good job of training the staff in terms of road construction standards and designs and how to do things, kind of the blending of the practical knowledge with the engineering side of that. And obviously, that's something that makes the road standards go up, the road quality go up, and I think we want to make sure that that continues.
Yeah, just wondering, maybe, what's your sense for the pool, what it could look like about this?
That worries me a little bit because if you actually look out in the marketplace right now, there's three engineering positions that are about the same, that are currently being advertised.
In this area?
In this area, yes. One with a local engineering firm that just came out last week, one with the Joint Powers Water Board, and one at one of the mines. So we don't know.
So that gives you mind, another question, because it's local, how competitive are those positions for some?
Find out.
Find out. It worries me.
It does.
And second, I'll just more of a statement question, just don't hurry, get the right person.
Well, there's also some other contacts that I have around the state that I've been trying to talk to once this gets approved. Do a little recruitment to see if they're willing to come.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I entertain the motion to approve the request to restaff vacancy in the engineering department. Has outlined by Mr. Roy. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Wenley, I'll make that, so I approve that motion. Is there a motion to approve? We have a second? Second? Second by Commissioner Smith, second motion by Commissioner Wenley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a request to restaff a vacancy in the Road and Bridge Department. Mr. Roy is here.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, we have a vacancy equipment operator in the Roden Bridge Department. The cost summary is included in your sheets. I think as a backdrop to this, I would say certainly Walling, I'm sure Dog is familiar, but this is an area that we've reduced considerably over the past 10 years in numbers. And it feels like overall that the number that they're at seems pretty good, other than some flexible staffing when that's needed to fill in. And so I think it's important to restaff this as soon as possible, especially given the timing moving into the construction season. I think that's going to, you know, it's a good challenge for these areas because many of the local employers are seasonal in this regard and have already started operations. So that'll be somewhat of a challenge.
Questions?
A lot of this is in proportion to the changes you were looking at in the structure.
A little bit, this is the restaff, and you know, last, two weeks ago, when I asked for the three seasonal and the restaffing of the one that's actually, instead of just being a signed position, I want to get somebody with a C D L, that's what we're doing. This is the restaffing of the current position and keeping everybody at that. I think with the three, four seasonal people, that we can meet that ebb and flow that we're talking about and keep everything right. You know, like I said a couple of weeks ago, hauling gravel, hauling water, especially to the east side of the county, is very tough. We contacted a lot of the oilfield companies, and they've been very quack with water, but gravel resources in the eastern part of the county is non-existent. So trucking is our main issue, to get stuff out on the roads in a proper amount of time. And you know, if you're hauling 80 miles, the more trucks you can put out, the more issues you can do it. It's a weight on something else, the weight of rolling a large truck.
This is one of the arguments we made on TransWest, is that that's 80 miles, believe me, where our research center is, here in Los Angeles, Green River, Marth Ross Springs. That's the challenge that not only he serves, but also the sheriff, and also P and Z, and also the fire. This is difficult following.
Well, one of the real significant ones there is zero gravel on that side of the count. Because it's going to come from somewhere else, you can't use a local source. There are no local sources, which creates a huge challenge.
Any other comments? I entertain the motion to approve the request. Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Smith?
I would move that we approve the request to restaff vacancy in the Road and Bridge Department that's present.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Gary, you didn't hear it earlier, but just, we were all very complimentary of what you did yesterday. Absolutely outstanding job. We all appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Take that a step further, Mr. Chairman. Really, it's not something present. It's also just an observation, but also hopefully part of listening, that for a long time, you've been bearing on your shoulders so much because of requests and confidentiality. And I can only imagine how difficult that's been for you over the months here. I just wanted to tell you how much I myself, I appreciate that, what you've done to, appreciate Mr. Van Meter and his family, and what you've done, way out of your way to perform. And I just admire, just honestly admire what you, what part of what you did, what you're asking for. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right. We all agree. We appreciate it. And thank you. Next, we have a request to restaff vacancy in the clerk of district court. Don Lee.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson.
Good morning.
County Commissioners. I'm Don Lee Bobak, clerk of the district court. First of all, I would like to extend my sympathies to the commissioner on the loss of Commissioner Van Meter, who has been a good commissioner and very beloved by Sweetwater County. So please accept my sympathies to all of you. Again, and I want to thank you for broadcasting the meetings. I can't be down here to all the meetings, and it really has been very helpful for me to be able to stay in the office and work while keeping my pulse on what's going on in Sweetwater County. So that, I really, really do appreciate that. Thank you very much. Before we get started, in my letter, I had said that we were down two positions, and I misspoke. There has always been eight positions in the clerk of district court's office when I took over from my predecessor. And we were going on memory, we didn't have the historic information. So we are currently down, well, we're down two with a new vacancy, but we're maintaining one clerk down. So I do apologize for that mistake.
So what is your staff, what should your staff be able to do? Positions number?
Well, with the time study that I did, it says we need 9.9. And that's for the other one.
You were talking about what your predecessor did.
She had eight. She had eight.
And that's really always been, that's current. Well, you don't have them.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I think we need to understand what baseline has been, and if we're going to go above that baseline, why. And I think you may get to that.
Thank you. My first request is to restaff a recently vacated position. It was vacated on April 26th, effective immediately. And this is a full-time budgeted position already. And I am asking the commissioner if I may restaff that position.
Which will take you to the?
Take me to seven. So that's my first request. I don't know if, because these are two separate agenda items, I don't know. Would you like to tell me?
We probably should handle that with this. It's a budgeted position, you've got a big vacancy in a budgeted position.
Yes.
Any questions to that, commissioners? You thought I'd entertain a motion to approve that request? Chairman? Mr. Wenley? The motion to approve the request to restaff the vacant position, the clerk position. We have a motion to approve that request. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roy, motion by Commissioner Wenley. Any further discussion? Gary, do you concur with that?
Yes.
All was in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The road gets slicker.
I can imagine, been there before. Each of you should have before you a packet regarding my request for addition of staff. After the first of the year, I met with each of you to explain our need. And Chairman Johnson, you asked to see in paper, on write. So I took to the task, and I did a time study that included all the clerks, myself and Belinda included. We tracked our time in 10-minute increments to calculate the man-hours. And we did this from mid-February to the end of March for a total of 34 days. And before you now, you have the results of this study. Belinda's going to act as Vanna for me. The first page shows the time spent for each case type, and the second page are my calculations and the comparisons to other clerks' offices in the state that are close to our caseload. And then that is followed by a detailed outline of what processes are handled for each case type. Anybody, everybody okay so far?
My first caller is Mr. Williams.
The last two pages, and I think I have them a little bit out of order. The last page with the graph and then those two are your two different methods of study. We have a caseload study, is the one with the bars, the bar graph, and then we have the actual hours. And I compared Campbell County, where we run about 100, sometimes 200 caseload difference, and Fremont County, they were the two closest caseload courts with the same caseload. And Fremont County is substantially lower than ours, but it was.
You're saying that they're third, I mean, Campbell is second, but you didn't look at Carvin, or you did look at Carvin?
I looked at Carvin.
And also Lincoln.
And Lincoln, and Uena.
And Fremont's the next, probably because of the reservation.
Uena runs about 560 cases on average. I get a three-year average. And they run about 560 cases a year. And they have four and a half clerks. Okay? And then Lincoln County is lower than that, and they have five clerks. So I have my, it's a statistic thing that the Supreme Court has, but Lincoln County runs 363 for one year, 380.
Significantly lower than the total.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe you've got a little more on the Cheyenne-Casper side of it.
Yeah, Casper and Cheyenne are out of my league. So, but I wanted to give you the best comparative I could, the closest caseloads. Okay. I've been before past commissions, and as I said, I've talked with you each individually this year earlier. And we're having, it's difficult, we're drowning. We're having a hard time keeping up the caseload. The clerks have been working an hour of overtime. With this recent vacancy, I've allowed them two hours overtime. But overtime's a two-edges sword. If they want to be paid for it, there goes my budget. If they take comp time, I'm already short-staffed, and more people are out of the office. Okay? And we're at a critical point. I have been receiving complaints from attorneys about their cases getting to the judges in a timely manner, and getting complaints from the judges, and getting their pleadings in a timely manner, getting them in the file when it's time for a case to be heard. And I feel like I'm handcuffed. I can't provide efficient service to the county. I'm really asking for your help. I really am. We've tried, we're trying to be proactive with the age of technology. We scan our files, okay? We don't have e-filing yet, but until there is a rule or statute for this electronic filing, we still have a manual case. The e-filing, by scanning, it's The e-filing, by scanning, it makes the files more accessible to the judges at the computers, to the public coming into public access, they can see it, they can print it, it's done, we don't have to go into the file holder, they may not be blah, blah, blah. So we've, you know, we're trying to be proactive. I have one judge that likes to see cases on the system, I have another judge that would prefer a paper file. So it's, we're about as efficient as we can be, but it's, it takes twice the time.
One of the things I think that Donalee is really getting at, that I think every department in McCounty has been at at one point or another, you're almost better paper or electronic, but in that period, and when you migrate, or trying to migrate here in both worlds, that's the least efficient position to be in. What makes it difficult for them, as opposed to some of the other operations within the department, we have the ability in most of the departments to implement an electronic record system, it is a veteran services, with Veteranspect, for example, but we could just do that. In this case, even before Donalee came, they were working on e-filing systems statewide, and to date still have not got a system implemented. And the only point that I'm trying to make here is that I'd be happy to beat Donalee up, but the truth of the matter is she doesn't control that system. That's something that has to come statewide and be implemented statewide. And so they're kind of in no man's land, with one foot in this kind of paper world and one in the electronic world, and they're doing both. They could do one or the other, it would help them considerably, but they're doing both right now.
So what do you ask for? Got Bonnie on my mind, because she just made that argument about me and both these two worlds to recruit.
Well, the study says that we're short 9.9.
I saw that.
Yeah. I would like to have nine clerks if I could.
Two more.
Two more.
In addition, one would be just a part round.
Correct. One would bring us to where the office has always been, when I came into office, and then an additional one, because the case processing has changed, so it's different.
Yeah, one of the reasons you would have liked to discuss, you felt you had a better job than predecessor, so you would do that.
And I feel I've done a better job than my predecessor. I also have Judge James here.
I know, you got backup, I saw. Gary, what's your thoughts on this?
Well, Donalee and I talked a lot about trying to get down, and I think the board has seen, you know, in other departments, trying to look at the, you know, information that exists, and I think Donalee's trying to do that. I think in an ideal world, you'd like a larger span of time, and maybe we could set up a way to continue to track that. Just to be clear, that the eight number that we're referring to was, I went back, and that's partly how we got to this discussion, and pulled all of the budget sheets from past times, that was eight, okay? And so that eight forever in the department, and currently she has seven, and so she's asking for two more people to get to that number, so I just want to be clear about that. So, yeah. So she's lower than, I guess my point is she's lower than where the department has historically been now, and so, and so she's asking for two more than she currently has, which would put it at nine, when it historically would have been at eight. Yeah, exactly.
And I do want to say we did split the office. We do have a portion of the office in the north part of the building, where Superior Court was housed. We have three clerks there, that provides better access, and we have, if not daily, we get very positive feedback of having that, to where people just come in, that their payments are made. And it does help with security, because you don't have people tracing down the hall and, you know, to come to the real office. So I do want to let you know, you know, at the commissions encouragement, we did make that move, and we are operating under it as well.
Comments? Questions? How's the rest of your budget proposal looking for this coming year, this side of?
I'm pretty well within last year's budget, maybe a little bit lower.
That goes well. Rest my case. So it goes well with, including the additional one that needs to be schools, or is that?
No, 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 because that hasn't been approved, I didn't make the way. And I'm not allowed to touch those numbers when I'm doing stuff.
What if we approved just one?
I would be very thankful.
For, to see how that works out.
I would be appreciative. I would love you to come in.
Obviously.
I would be appreciative of whatever the commission.
We've worked very hard, this commission has worked very hard to reduce the head counties, this county to save the county millions of dollars.
And I have been a part of that as well.
I know. I know. You've got the message.
Yes.
As everyone has, but I got a feeling that we're going to get inundated with additional requests, just like yours. We've got to get permission, more right, intelligent permission, because they're going to see the light. So my information, we'll give you a word and see how it works out. And in six months, if it doesn't work out, we'll count it, that's just my personal thoughts. Judge James would like to say something? Judge James, would you like to say something?
Well, I would. I came down here to support Donalee and her full request, because, you know, I work with that office on a daily basis, and I'm seeing what the effect of her being understaffed is causing. It's hurting the courts, it's causing delays for litigants and attorneys, and we really, they're struggling, and because they're struggling, we're struggling to have the proper paperwork in front of us on a timely basis. And I think it's important to note how things have changed in the past few years. With the advent of all this pro se litigation, the clerk's office is spending a ton of time working with the general public when they come in to, like, do their own divorce, or whatever. I was in the clerk's office just this morning and watched one of the clerks spend at least half an hour with someone who's trying to do their own divorce, and I kept thinking, she should be at her desk doing, you know, filing and things like that. But that's, that's just how it is now, because of the pro se packets, and times have changed. And the time that the clerks have to spend interacting with the public now has just increased so much, and that takes them away from maintaining the files, getting the papers to the appropriate judges. And if you go in their office right now, they have big stacks of files everywhere, and I know my assistant spends a lot of time just trying to track things down, because they can't get it to us, or scan in a timely manner to us, and I'm not faulting them, they just don't have the staff to do it. So there's a big effect on other, you know, on the courts, and the people who come before the courts, and practice before the courts. So I just came down here to say, you know, if, she needs help, and helping her will help us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, suggestions?
No?
Thank you very much for coming down.
Yeah, well, no, I really feel strongly about this. Thank you.
Yeah, the fact that you came down, I anticipated you do feel strong.
And Judge Labrie was going to come, however, he has a case.
Sure. So Donalee would be overtime in pain currently, that goes away, is that all, just one person left, you go through, how much overtime are you, you have two hours per?
Yeah, if ever you have, most positions, the overtime would probably go away.
You take 14 hours of overtime.
Pretty much.
And that's not a position.
But that doesn't, well, she's not news, but, you know, me and Belinda, they're.
Sure.
No salaries?
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure, commissioners? You put the request for two additional people. Well, I would move that we approved the request for two additional staff members, and we quit the district court's office for fiscal year 1920. So that's an issue. Takes me to the nine. Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second to the motion. We have a second to the motion. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Welling. Any further discussion? And all those in favor of the motion, we'll take gold color on this. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye, we'll start with three, Commissioner Lloyd. Smith?
Aye.
Johnson? No. When my motion passes, unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Gary?
Thank you.
Next, we have a request for additional staff. Next, we have a request to move the position from the engineering budget to land use budget in fiscal year 1920, 19 through 20, and to restaff vacant GIS planner position. Mr. Biggum, Mr. Clean, and Mr. Liversky. You're not on the table. I'd smack up your words. Gary?
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, to provide you a little bit of background to this discussion, first of all, we had the current GIS person will be leaving as a result of their retirement options, so partly we're addressing that functionality. That position is, you know, as it's traditionally been in the kind of technical area for engineering sort of role. As I think most of you realize, the concept of thinking about data through a graphic interface, through a map, is becoming more and more important. Wally, I know you participated in the migration studies with wildlife and oil and gas development in those areas. That's largely been represented using GIS applications. When you do emergency evacuation, you use GIS applications to see, you know, the addresses and number of people affected in a certain area. It's become not just a mainstay tool for these guys, but a tool that's used by many, many departments, fire department, police department, throughout the county. But it's also being more and more used as a planning tool. And so when we have vacancies, as you know, we sit down and discuss kind of like, well, what's the best way? Do we need other skills? Do we need different things? So Gene and Eric and I spent quite a bit of time wrestling with this issue, and I think what's been developed is a, is a sound approach that everybody can support. What's, what we've kind of come to is that we can combine, in fact, we can find in the marketplace, and we've been looking at some positions, planners today are typically using GIS applications as their primary, or one of their primary tools that you do their job. So there's a number of folks out there who, even in the state of Wyoming and in this area, who are kind of, come from a planning background, but are technically competent in the GIS area. So this gave us an opportunity to kind of address a couple needs. One of the concerns that we have in Eric's area is, is historically, the planning and zoning area has been the area that follows the economy the closest. When the economy's been booming, we've had as many as 13 people in the department. When it's been slower, we've had less people where we're at now, and then generally, it's somewhere in between those two realms. But today, we have no, no support or backup in Eric's department at all. I'm sure you'll want to talk about that a little bit. So one of the things with this area is that I think we can get someone who can perform that GIS function for us and lead, and apply those technologies and skill sets in helping support the planning operations, as well as the other functions that have happened. And I know Eric has talked to some of the folks who have similar functions in the state and around the area through his professional networks, and that seems to fit the niche that we have to kind of get a benefit for both departments, when we get a technical person and we get somebody with a planning background, which is becoming increasingly prevalent in the marketplace, because it's such an important tool for planners. So because of that, it seems more sense to have that position reporting to Eric, and obviously, they work closely together on zoning and mapping issues regardless, so I don't see that as a problem. But primarily, I think it makes more sense, and I think these guys have agreed to have this position report to Eric and then support the various county needs. Now, within the county, the GIS position, the mapping and the database support many of the departments connected with the work that's done in the county clerk's office, the county treasurer's office, and as I've already mentioned, the fire department, police, joint communications, and many, many other areas.
Assessors.
Assessors, yes. Yes, so. So that's just some of the background of how we got there.
My first observation is there's been a big change in this case, and the cooperation is evident between the two departments is absolutely great. So it's easy for me to support this, because the way two of you run the departments and I do it alone, which is in the best interest of all support, we do it cheaper, we do it better, that's my first observation, it's very easy for me to support this. I think it's going to be harder for the area to find this. Let me ask you one question. On this, not too long ago, maybe a couple of years ago, we talked about that, what is the name of the photography that they use that's so much better today, it's called Light?
Lightar.
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 Have you seen what they're, or do we have Lightar now?
We don't.
Have you seen, have you seen what they're doing with Lightar in Central America?
Yeah.
I've been there, seen it, it's absolutely unbelievable.
Yes.
They can just remove all the vegetation.
Vegetation.
Vegetation and the seals.
They're using a lot in agricultural, for field deals.
More three-dimensional.
More three-dimensional. The other thing that we've actually looked at, Eric and I have looked at over the last couple of years, is a lot of the county doesn't change, but a lot of the county does, and it's usually centered around the population centers. So why fly the whole entire county when you don't have to? And, you know, drone technologies came a long ways, and a drone could fly a lot cheaper in those isolated areas, if we have a new subdivision, why fly everything around it when you can just fly the subdivision with the drone, looking at that and getting better resolution? Some of the drone stuff, now you can read stop signs.
You can see Gene on the ground.
More importantly, you can see Eric, it's a different profile.
So upon these questions, my co-counselors.
So, no objections?
Sounds like so, I'd entertain a motion to honor the request to move the position as it indicated from the engineering budget to land use budget in fiscal year 1920, and to restaff the vacant GIS planner position. We have a motion by Commissioner Welling, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have a request to restaff position in human resources. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a busy morning. In your packet is a request to restaff a vacancy and the cost information due to that within the human resources department. Again, just a little bit of history of this. This was a position that when we took over the Health Insurance Administration and the billing for all the 11 component units that participated in our plan, we moved this position down from the county clerk's office to my office at that time. So the primary role of this position is, although there are other duties, but the primary role is in coordinating and managing the health insurance enrollment, billing and payment information from retirees, component units, and then ultimately, processing of those to the vendors, UMR, Delta Dental, Vision Services, and the other entities. In addition, this position has, is the front gate for insurance claims. By insurance claims, I mean liability insurance claim where we have vehicle windows broken, rock chips, accidents with the sheriff's department, and those areas will start those claims from the various departments or buildings that have been damaged. So with that, I'm requesting to restaff that position.
Just a question, Gary D. The incumbent, our incumbent at this position has been transferred into the clerk's office, is that my understanding?
Yes, he's been hired to work in that county clerk's office.
She took that knowledge, because that's where she came from. She has that same experience there. I don't know, no further questions?
I see the note that potential restapping, that on the prepaid, it's up to step five. Is that just based on, okay, we're concerned that you're really liking it and more experience, and so you're looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So what, what that really is, is if you had somebody who was doing pretty much this identical job somewhere, we could, after the probation, bring it in at a higher level pay. Obviously, the probability is low, but you don't, if you get a good person, you have that ability to do that. I don't expect to find that, but it's possible. You never know what's going on, so. Yeah, yeah, so.
Really questions? With that, I entertain a motion to honor the request to restaff a vacant positions in the HR department, Mr. Mike. Got a motion by Commissioner Wendell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion?
So lay us on support of this?
Yeah, I think so.
Any further questions? Now, Gary's done a wonderful job down there with this, this issue. It was a problem, Gary and his staff has really been a great job in providing this with the issue. It's really easy to do this, but just for us. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, you know. Next, we have impact assistance distribution for Gateway West Transmission. Mr. Slaughter.
Good morning again, Mr. Slaughter.
Good morning. It is still morning.
It is a hundred and thirty. We're heading. I couldn't believe that. Sally told me that we're going to finish tomorrow, and you've got to be kidding me.
Commissioners, once again, good morning. This is basically an informational session. Several months ago, I received from the county attorney's office information with respect to the new distribution on the Gateway West Transmission line. Came from Deputy County Attorney Shermesler at that point in time, and was basically informational for me with respect to the amount of money the Sweetwater County would be receiving from the Industrial Siding Council for impact assistance on that project, and giving me a proposed breakdown of how that money was to be allocated. So in anticipation of that, I hadn't received anything else over time, and so a couple of weeks ago, I started trying to look at what we were to anticipate with respect to those funds that were coming in and how we would distribute those. And it led me to discussions with Bonnie with respect to setting up accounts as to how we were going to receive this money, and with John with respect to the legal ramification of doing so. So in your packet, I included the original schedule that I had, which came from Attorney Shermesler, and it will show you, as we talked earlier today, I misspoke, I said that it was about three and a half million dollars that we would receive in total. It's actually $3,812,333.35 in total that will be paid to Sweetwater County. What we received is the schedule that was included for you, showing that we would start receiving payments in April of 2019. We would receive 15 monthly payments with the last one being June of 2020. What we actually have found out is those payments are not going to be on that schedule. They actually came in, the first payment actually came in yesterday. So we did receive the first payment on this yesterday. So there's an Excel spreadsheet that I had included with that for you, showing what the distribution will be for each of the entities with each of these monthly installments that we receive. So what we're going to be receiving and what we anticipate from the information that I've received, in talking, I've talked to Gene about this, I've talked with John, we're anticipating that this schedule is something that we will receive directly from Industrial Siding, and that we will receive this based on this schedule, and that we will receive $254,000 each month until we receive the full $3.8 million.
Let me ask you a question, unless you want to carry on, Mr. Lloyd.
Well, let me just explain one other thing, and then this may clarify the question. In the past, when we received impact assistance funds, it was always based on a sales tax amount, and the Industrial Siding Council came in and did a baseline sales tax amount prior to the project taking place. Then whatever additional sales tax came in over that period of time was remitted back to my office, and we remitted that as impact tax at that point in time. Now, with the change that has been done with the Industrial Siding Council now, the entities are going and making direct application for these funds. And at that point in time, my understanding is that the Industrial Siding Council is saying yes or no to those entities in those amounts. Now, in addition to what I presented for that table, there is a breakdown for what each of the entities are to receive on that, and that's included on this schedule also. So it's different now than what it has previously been, and so my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that as we receive these payments in the future, it's going to come directly on these schedules from the Industrial Siding Council. It won't come as a matter of sales tax. But I have been really out of the loop on this, so that may not be correct, but that's what's happened so far with this Gateway West.
Well, obviously, we just went through this with TransWest, and that's contrary to what I understand. First of all, the sales tax estimate for TransWest is $24 million. So that's what's anticipated to flow into the state's coffers. I got in trouble with the committee because my, and obviously, I'm going to get into it again, that the state has comfortably interested in this thing. Because if the sales tax is $24 million, and they're only going to give, and I'm only talking to TransWest because I think it reflects back to Gateway West, which I wasn't involved in. But the amount of monies that they're going to allocate to Sweetwater County is the $5.32 million, and Carvin was $3 million, so the total of it was around $8 million. The numbers don't matter. Numbers don't matter, but $8 million. So what happens to the difference between $24 million and $8 million?
State receives.
I won't say it again because I'm already in trouble. But you're right, Mr. Slaughter. So, and then the other issue that I think is a little different than what we understood, and John will straighten the eye again on this, is when you say there are X number of equal payments, it's my understanding that those funds will be allocated as the work starts and continues. So you may have during this period of construction, a higher amount of sales tax that is being collected right up front, or maybe not, maybe it's at the end, so that's very contrary to what my understanding was. Because when are we going to receive the funds? Because it's going to cause a problem for Sweetwater County, because we may have to buy equipment right up front, and we don't have the money. You're not, you're not, we have the receiving money, but some of this equipment needs to be bought. Now, we're talking about Gateway West. This is going to have to be bought in order to mitigate, and what the money is supposed to be for is to mitigate impacts of these projects. So in Gateway West, we might have to buy this equipment, and we're going to have to front for that, so it's going to be budgeted. So John, I'll turn to you. What is your understanding of these X number of equivalent payments to the county? Is that, is that going to continue to happen with TransWest, or what's your, what's your understanding?
My understanding is that the council was pretty adamant that the funds, although they do stem from the applicant, they come from the general fund. Okay, that was their statement for the state of Wyoming. Those funds will be distributed on a monthly basis according to the schedule that you've presented, as long as the project is continuing. And yes, I have, I have been clear with different entities that receive money that, other than the county, and the county included, if, if we make payments in advance, we do run the risk that if that project does stop, that we will not have that money. So the money will be distributed regardless, I think, of how much is actually coming in on a monthly basis, at that amount. I don't see that, that particular piece changing. I think the big variable will be if the project were to stop, which doesn't happen very often, but it did recently happen in Carvin County.
And what he's saying about the equal payments is better, in my opinion. But you still have to know how long is this project going to take, because it's not front end and stuff.
Well, as I say, Mr. John, I was not party to any of this. This is just what I have been able to gather. As I say, I went down to talk to Eric one day. He wasn't there. I talked to Gene, and we talked about the schedule at that point in time when I was trying to develop this. And at that time, Gene had stated that he believed that it was going to be the 15-month schedule that I had at that point in time. And so that's what I've developed, is with the intent being that we are going to receive the monies on that 15-month schedule. Now, I would believe that that's going to be the case, because we did receive the first payment yesterday, and the first payment was exactly what we were to receive for that first payment. So without having other information, I would anticipate that next month, we're going to receive another payment for $254,155.56. The balance of this that I wanted to inform you of is the discussions that we have with Bonnie with respect to how we're going to receipt this and then how we're going to distribute it. And so basically, if you look at each of the entities, we have, the sheriff's office is receiving a percentage of this, Roden Bridge is receiving a percentage, Land Use is receiving a percentage, Memorial Hospital, the fire district, the food bank, the ambulance board, the city of Rock Springs, and the town of Wambsucker are all receiving portions. On the sheet that I've given you, it has their distribution percentage. So what we anticipate doing, in talking with Bonnie, is Bonnie will set up the account for impact assistance funds. We will receipt those funds based on these percentages to each of those individual accounts. The three accounts for the county will just remain in the impact tax fund to be used through our budget process at that point in time. And there was some discussion Bonnie and I had about how to distribute the other funds. Bonnie had thought that it might be better for us to distribute it as we had done specific purpose taxes. The money comes directly into my office. My office would then cut a check out to these entities. I don't believe that that's probably appropriate, and my comment to Bonnie was, you know, there are a couple of these entities that are not set up as boards, they do not have treasurers, and because of that, I don't have statutory authority to release money to them. So my thinking was, this is actually more in line with the function of the county clerk's office. Within that account, we'd be better off to receipt those funds at that point in time and have these entities then voucher for that. So after having talked with Bonnie about that, I went down and talked with John to see what he, what he recommended. His feeling was certainly the same. He felt like there were better checks and balances in doing this with a voucher system through the clerk's office and handling it in that manner. And so it was actually his idea that I come today and present this to talk to you, too. So we discussed it. So you're on board with that, and you have full understanding, and so you can participate in the decision of how that takes place.
Well, understanding, this one thing, Elliot, again, I'm scooting about Gateway West. There's a piece of equipment, and a question relative to Gateway West. I surely don't think, for that specific piece of equipment, under the circumstances, that the county should be putting up the money to buy that piece of equipment. I think that should be at the point when there's appropriate funds available to buy that piece of equipment, and this one is a special case, I think, and I don't want to go on the record with it, but that, until that funding is complete and in an account to pay for it, then we would buy it. We wouldn't buy it before the funding is there. Another problem you're going to have, this, this is not going to be easy. You take the $5 million that's we're going to get on TransWest, 50% of that's going to go to Wambsucker. So, you know, and entities within Wambsucker. So it's, it's really an accounting issue that needs to be looked at very carefully. I'd suggest even Christina may be involved in this also.
Christina and I talked about it about 20 minutes and Smith the other night. So we've had this discussion, that's why she's here today.
Are you confident you're going to have this conversation?
Exactly, yeah, so. No, and I think your point is well taken, Mr. Chairman, and I think that's exactly where council's position was and the reason that he felt like this should be done through a voucher process. That way, you know, the commission does have the approval at that point in time. You can look and say, you know, we have receiveded five months' worth of funds into that fund we have in the, in the county's Roden Bridge fund at this point in time. We have $26,000. We will allow you to expend that, and you would have the authority at that point in time. Or if we had done it the other way, as that money came in, I would have just distributed the money on a monthly basis, so the Roden Bridge department at that point in time would have gotten $58,000 in that first payment, and those other entities would have received that also. You wouldn't have had the ability then to look at that and say, you know, we want to make sure that we have the funds in place to do that. So I think that's the reason.
I think it's extremely important. This commission knows what's going on, because we're a party, we're the ones, we're the ones who went to the Industrial Siding Council and pleaded for those, those funds, and I think we have the responsibility, the people we represent, to see that it's done transparently.
It's just a better system all around, I think, if we handle it that way. So that would be my recommendation.
Including the three of the ideas that you have with Christina, are you okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, I am, but with the caveat, it's set up in a project where, you know, we isolate it by each entity, and what happens is Bonnie has created these main accounts in the fund for the impact assistance, and then it's tied to a project where it's lit up. So right now, it's already set up with sheriff's office, Roden Bridge, and Land Use. And, you know, for the last six months, I've been hearing it's similar to like a grant, accountability, it's just not formally a grant, but I'm more than happy to do that with Bonnie and.
You can't combing the, you know, the funds from TransWest, for example, or Gateway West.
Yep, that's, that's exactly the issue.
And we need to know what we're doing with that.
But just to be clear, so are you directing me to, to receipt in the vouchers then for these outside entities? Is that what I'm understanding?
I don't have that authority. What are your thoughts?
The question, I mean.
Mr. Smith, are you talking about doing vouchers across all of these? You say you do it out, you do it out in the statutory.
Well, theoretically, we probably could do it for the hospital, we could do it for the, for the fire district potentially, but it doesn't make sense really to me to do that, and I think that was John's position also. I think the better way to handle this is with each of these, my, my function in all of this is receiving the money and receiving it originally. of this is receiving the money and receiving it originally. Then what will take place is it will be in that account. Christina will then, at that point in time, work with Bonnie to set up the projects, and then as the entities voucher for that money, it will be appropriated to each of those projects at that point in time. So my, my function is just limited to receiving the money and doing that original distribution to these accounts. Then from that point in time, and I'll certainly be glad to work with them with respect to that, but I think that's kind of where my limit is, and then it will come down to Bonnie and Christina with respect to that. But it certainly, at that point in time, makes more sense that each of these entities submit a voucher for the payment of that. You review that just as you do all of the other vouchers at the start of one of your meetings, and then the clerk's office will cut the check to those at that point in time.
Just like we, like we with Ross, we have to...
I, I think this proposed, John, you have a call for the same?
No, that was, that was part of our discussion, I think, at Trans-West, dealing with a private entity, and just making sure that the county had an observation, and so that is the reason for my, my recommendation to Rob, certainly referring to Bonnie, Rob, and Christina.
See, there's, there's one in Gateway West we have to take care of.
And then going forward, Mr. Chairman, my, my point would be, as you receive information on Trans-West, if you would get me whatever information you have, because I've just, I've been kind of out of the loop on this, I've had to kind of piecemeal all of this information together. And so if, if you see something on a distribution, or you see anything with respect to that, if you would just include me in that so that I can be a part of it. I will be setting up the same type of distribution for Trans-West, is what I've done with this. Just the better information I got.
Where did you get the information that it's going to be equal payments?
It was, it was what I got originally in the, in the email that I got from Mr. Sher Messler, when he attended, I believe he attended that original Gateway West meeting.
He was Gateway West, that's right.
And at that point in time, he received that information from the industrial signing council and sent an email forward on to me.
Eric, John, we didn't, we haven't gotten that information, have we, how those payments are going to be made?
No.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we do, sorry.
Just a second.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Eric.
Um, I haven't received one.
And that didn't come out to me?
On Gateway?
No, no.
On, on Gateway?
Trans-West, oh, because...
Oh, Trans-West, sorry.
I can only speak to the ones I have knowledge about.
Sure. With Trans-West, we do have the MOU that was signed, which has a distribution chart on there, that I could share with Rob and Christina and Bonnie.
Is it, do you recall whether it's equal payments?
I don't recall that. I thought it was based on, when we listened to the speech that we got to listen to in Saratoga, that's what they stated, so I'm a little confused, too, so.
Well, you aren't. Surely, you heard that out, but he has to know, Rob has to know.
I can get that information around.
So what, what, all the information we have, Christina, you have a question?
Sorry, I was too excited. No, like, no, what's exciting is with the project, for example, for Gateway West, we have attached to it the DQ permit that has this documentation that Rob provided to you. So if there's questions in 20 years, it's right there, and we would do the same for Trans-West. From looking it over, it doesn't look like Trans-West, though, would be any different than the precedence of Gateway West.
Okay. It sound good, Rob? Any further, Gene, did you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I do have a question, and just, and I might have misunderstood Rob, but he said that even county entities, until we collect that revenue, we're not allowed to spend it?
Well, I would assume, Gene, and, and this is going to be up to the commission and the, and Bonnie, these funds are going to go into your budget. So yesterday, we got a payment of $254,000. So for Roden Bridge, $58,086.54 of that will go into that account. Okay? Then typically, you would just budget for that through your department, and it would be a part of your overall budget. So you're going to budget, budget the full amount, I would assume, of what you're going to receive in fiscal year 20, and then you'll use that money as part of that budget. So you'll anticipate $58,000 a month for 15 months, for the 12 months of this fiscal year, and, and use that money within your budget, would be how that would...
My question on that is like Gateway, we kind of the three roads that need to be built early this summer, at a cost of $800,000.
See, I, that's part of it, I think, sees, you, and like you say, you're budgeting, we're going to stick our neck out, and I'm not worried about that type of one. What I'm worried about is we buy equipment, and then it goes south. Well, they're all going south, no, that's... But I, alls I ask is, as you budget through Bonnie, that we know those funds that are in your budget are impact funds from Gateway West or Trans-West. The only ones I'm really worried about are these other two entities where we got a little bit of a problem. And there's no need, we'll, we'll explain that to you.
Yeah, with those budget amounts, do they carry a different account number?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have to know that. So we have to know those amounts. Go ahead, come on.
Mr. Chairman, so just to be clear, and Rob was not maybe privy to this information in all fairness, for the expenditures, a project for Gateway West has already been set up with sheriff's office, Roden Bridge, and Land Use. So similar to grants, that's where that money gets budgeted and expended. Bonnie has already set up a fund account that the project is tied to, so she does the budgeting. Gene has already started charging to his account in that project. He's anxious to get started on the roads. So just for clarification, the three departments are not a concern. It sounds like they can proceed. Bonnie did a budget amendment today, and that is to cover those expenses. It's these other outside entities you want them to voucher in, and I will create additional parts of this Gateway project that will be charged to and compared to the cash flow of the revenues. Are we on the same page?
Yeah. And the only issue might be as well sort of those entities.
For Trans-West.
That type of thing?
Yep.
Are we clear on that question? Anything that would be a problem with that? It's a good, it's a very good problem to have, and we appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. And I think we've got a pretty good start on all of it right now, I think.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. And I think I'm next, too, so.
All right, Eric. Next on our agenda is others, are there any other items that need to come before we go to the executive session? Okay, with that, we do have legal issues that we need to discuss in the executive session, and there may be a personal issue, so that remains to be seen. And as far as the media is concerned, if you want to hang around and wait to see if there's anything that comes out, you're surely welcome to do that. So I entertain the motion.
We watch you.
Watch, oh, better idea.
I do entertain the motion to go on the executive session, and as you outlined, we have a motion by Commissioner Wendell, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner, like, any further discussion? I think none. All those favor motions indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those? And I think you will go on the executive session.